Good evening. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Monday, January 23, 2012, to order. Will the city clerk please call roll and make announcements?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I will be happy to call roll for the January 23, 2012, regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Additionally, those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment either during the public hearing or during the call for public comment, you're required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on the item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards are received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided however that such an individual shall file a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you will expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurman.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Koontz.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Luss.
Here.
Councilmember Bert Hewitt.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
Councilmember Lance Flaherty.
Here.
Would everyone please rise with a pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Again, want to welcome everybody here on such a dreary rainy weather out there. I hope we get some sunshine pretty soon. Will the city clerk please sound the first item?
First item is approval of meeting agenda. This is agenda item number 12-020.
Okay. Is there any other items to be considered? Oh, no?
Mayor, I need to add executive session for litigation.
Anything else anybody have? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the meeting agenda with the addition of the executive session for litigation.
Second motion.
Got a motion by Councilmember Hewitt, second by Councilmember Luss, to approve the agenda with the addition of executive session to discuss litigation. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Next item we have is public comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and the city council and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. There's no discussion on items on the consent agenda or first presentation from the public or from council. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record. You'll have five minutes for remarks. The city clerk, do we have any general public comment?
No, we do not, sir.
Okay. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Will the city clerk please sound the items?
Our first item is approval of the January 9, 2012, regular council minutes. Our next item is approval of financial statements for the period ending August 2011. Agenda item number 12-022. Our next item is approval of preliminary financial statements for the period ending September 2011. Agenda item number 12-023. Our next consent agenda item is approval of a contract between Rick Pruitt's FAICP and the City of Milton for the purpose of providing professional planning services for a transfer of development rights feasibility study. Agenda item number 12-024. Approval of a hosted application services agreement between Guardian Tracking LLC and the City of Milton. Agenda item number 12-025. Our final consent agenda item is approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Milton and Kettleson &amp; Associates for Hopewell Francis Cogburn Roundabout Peer Review. This is agenda item number 12-026.
Do I have a motion, second, on the consent agenda?
Mayor, I move that we accept the items on the consent agenda.
My second motion.
Got a motion by Councilmember Longoria, second by Councilmember Luss, for approval for the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. No one opposed?
Similar hairdo, Major, threw you off.
It is. I think you're right.
Different schools together.
All right. Moving on to reports and presentations, will the city clerk please sound the first item?
Our first item is a proclamation recognizing Milton's cuisine and cocktails being named a top 100 restaurant. This is presented by Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Okay. On this presentation recognizes Milton cuisines and cocktails, a popular crab-apple-eateries recently recognized by the website opentable.com as being one of the top 100 restaurants in the United States serving American-style food. It's a big honor for any restaurant and will surely bring travelers looking for tasty treats to Milton. Tonight, what I'd like to do is, I believe this was sponsored by Councilmember Thurman, so I'd like to have Councilmember Thurman read this proclamation.
Is Chef Boyd here yet?
I don't see him.
Should we go ahead and do the other proclamation first?
We can.
They are?
They are coming. Okay. Well, if it's all right with the council, then we'll move on to the next one and come back to that one. Is that all right, Ken?
Yes, sir.
Our next item is a proclamation naming February "Have a Heart for North Fulton Community Charities," presented by Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Okay. Do we have anybody here to accept this proclamation? Do we expect anyone here? Okay. Well, we'll go ahead and make this proclamation and then we'll follow up on that. Next on the agenda, we have a proclamation naming February "Have a Heart for NFCC Month" in honor of the great work done by the Roswell-based North Fulton Community Charities. NFCC has since 1982 done spectacular work in the community to end the cycles of homelessness and promote independence for families in North Fulton. Again, I'm going to read the proclamation, then I'd like all the representatives, if they're here, which I don't see them, to join us up front for some photos. Okay. Proclamation, "Have a Heart for NFCC Month." Whereas, eight concerned citizens from our community gathered on July 29, 1982 and formed a nonprofit charitable organization known as North Fulton Community Charities. Whereas, North Fulton Community Charities' mission is to build self-sufficiency and prevent homelessness and hunger by providing emergency assistance and family enrichment programs for the financially challenged families residing in our community. And whereas, North Fulton Community Charities provided emergency aid to more than 5,000 families this past year. Whereas, North Fulton Community Charities distributes more than nine tons of food each week to combat hunger. And whereas, North Fulton Community Charities provides enrichment programs designed to enable self-sufficiency. Classes are taught in money management, job-seeking, GED preparation, English as a second language, and other life skills as needed. And whereas, North Fulton Community Charities positively impacts the lives of underprivileged children by donating school supplies, warm coats and clothing, Easter baskets and toys. And whereas, North Fulton Community Charities conducts an annual holiday providing food baskets for needy families. And whereas, North Fulton Community Charities has constituted a coalition of compassion in the community made up of 80 faith-based partners, 141 civic partners, 101 area schools, 418 corporate partners, as well as hundreds of individuals and families. And whereas, North Fulton Community Charities log more than 125,000 volunteer hours and employs 500 volunteers each week. And whereas, North Fulton Community Charities is conducting its annual fund and awareness raising campaign "Have a Heart for North Fulton Community Charities" during the month of February. Now therefore, we, the mayor and the city council of the City of Milton, Georgia hereby proclaim the month of February 2012 as "Have a Heart for North Fulton Community Charities" Month and call upon the citizens of Milton to join in the celebration by making a contribution in support of the great work that North Fulton Community Charities is doing to enhance the quality of life in our city, given under my hand and seal the City of Milton, Georgia on the 23rd day of January 2012. And we'll just hold these proclamations and we'll get the two representatives. All right. What could you say?
Yeah, I talked to Chef Boyd. He thought it was 6:30. He's on Highway 9 and they're on their way here, so if you want to, I told him we'd just keep pushing forward in the agenda maybe, and then once we saw him, we could move back up to that.
Okay.
Is that okay? Ken? You need to have that.
All right. There's no items under first presentation or public hearing, so we'll move on to our zoning agenda. Will the city clerk please read the zoning rules and sound the first item?
At the second regularly scheduled meeting of the month, the mayor and city council consider a zoning agenda. These items include rezoning petitions, modifications of zoning use permits, and associated concurrent variances, in addition to ordinances, resolutions, and text amendments. The petitions will be heard in the sequence listed on the posted agenda. I would like to acquaint you with some of the rules and procedures for this meeting. The applicant and all those speaking in support of an application will be allowed a total of 10 minutes to present the petition. The applicant may choose to save some of the time for rebuttal following the presentation by the opposition. Since the burden of proof is upon the applicant, the applicant will be allowed to make closing remarks, provided time remains with the allotted time. The city clerk will be keeping track of your time and will inform you periodically of the remaining time for your presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards are received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable before beginning their presentation. The Planning Commission heard the rezoning items and recommendations were forwarded to the mayor and city council for consideration and disposition. The applicant shall not submit material to the council during this meeting unless requested to do so. All material that you wish to be reviewed by the council in consideration of your application should be submitted to the staff of the Community Development Department to be included in the normal distribution of packages to the council. When an opponent of a rezoning action has made, within two years immediately preceding the filing of the rezoning action being opposed, campaign contributions aggregating $250 or more to a local government official of the local government which will consider the application, it shall be the duty of the opponent to file a disclosure with the governing authority of the respective local government at least five days prior to the Planning Commission meeting. A violation of relevant state statute constitutes a misdemeanor. Therefore, if you have contributed $250 or more to a council member and you have not filed a disclosure prior to the Planning Commission meeting, the city attorney strongly suggests that you have someone else speak for your point of view. Our first zoning item is ZM 11-03, 12792 Donegal Lane, lot number 39, Vickery Crest Subdivision, Gerald E. Hudgens, request to modify condition 3A of RZ 05135 to reduce the minimum rear yard from 50 feet to 10 feet along the west property line. This is agenda item number 11271. First presentation was heard at the December 5, 2011, regular meeting. Was deferred at the December 19, 2011, regular council meeting. Ms. Kathleen Field.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. I will be using a PowerPoint, so I'll direct your attention to your screens for this. This is, as was stated, is Zone Mod 11-03. Thank you. And the request is to reduce the minimum rear yard from 50 feet to 10 feet along the west property line to allow for placement of an accessory structure being a garden shed. And the parcel location map is in front of you to show you the location of this site. The subject site is located in Vickery Creek Subdivision. It is Zone Community Unit Plan, CUP. Any changes to the approved zoning conditions require a zoning modification, and that's why we're here this evening. Currently, there are 15 homes occupied, 10 under construction, and I believe the total subdivision number of sites is 46. The next one is the site plan showing in red the location of the garden shed. The applicant is requesting a reduction of the minimum rear yard requirement on the west side of the property from 50 feet to 10 feet so as to allow for the completion of his garden shed. And I'll go back to the site location again, and you can see that he is in that rear setback area. In terms of community input, the community zoning information meeting was held on November 30, 2011. In addition to the applicant, five people were in attendance, all in opposition. The concern stated was that there was a potential of setting a precedent for further actions of this type. In terms of the staff analysis, when staff inspected the gardening shed under construction, it determined that it was located within the 20-foot drainage easement as shown on the subdivision's recorded plat. Therefore, the applicant has agreed to raise the structure on pillars to allow for the free flow of water. Also, the applicant intends to finish the exterior of the shed with matching architecture and materials as that of the house. The applicant has also agreed to screen the structure from road with evergreens, and I'll show you the picture of that in a moment. And a staff evaluation of the rear yard finds that the buildable area of the lot is small and that there are minimal alternative locations on which to locate the shed. And here is a picture from the street showing that the shed that is in the rear has evergreens, evergreen plantings in front, so it is already screened. And then here is a picture of the shed. Staff recommendation is approval of ZM 11-03 with conditions as follows. To the owner's agreement concerning minimum setbacks and design standards, that he modify the minimum rear yard along the west-south property lines to state 50 feet except for lot 39, which is 12792 Donegal Lane, which shall be 10 feet only for the existing accessory structure depicted on the site plan dated November 3, 2011. That the accessory structure on lot 39 shall be elevated to a minimum of 12 inches from the ground to allow water to flow. And that the existing structure located on lot 39 shall be screened from view of Donegal Lane. The meeting on December 19 of the city council, the city attorney was asked if the requested zoning modification could be heard as a concurrent variance instead. The city attorney will provide you with his opinion on the matter. That is my presentation.
Mr. City Attorney, you're on.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that was in fact a request that was made of me. I have tried to communicate my opinion back to the council, and in fact, I have the opinion that I've provided now. My recommendation was pursuant to Milton zoning code that a concurrent variance was not appropriate because the way the language in the code is framed, the concurrent variance is supposed to travel with a zoning modification. Here, the curious part is that the zoning modification and the concurrent variance would be for the same relief. So therefore, you would be seeking, or the applicant would be seeking, to basically have the same relief administered by two different standards because the reason or the rationale that you can provide a modification to a zoning conditions and the bases of a concurrent variance use two different standards. One is much more liberal than the other, quite frankly, and the conditions required to be satisfied for a variance are much more strict. For instance, it can't be a self-imposed hardship, et cetera. The underlying rationale for why the request was made of me is more important, and that was, if there is a belief that providing some sort of relief in this situation makes sense, is there a way to provide that relief without setting a precedent that is unwanted by the council? And in that situation, my answer is you could do that, but that is, I wouldn't go down the variance path. That's my recommendation. Wouldn't go down the variance path. But if you wanted to structure a motion to approve this zoning condition change such that you, within the context of the motion itself, state that this is to have no presidential effect on future zoning modifications in the City of Milton or in this neighborhood or in this subdivision, you could certainly do that. And of course, governments do that all the time and for the very reasons that I think that request was made of me. So my advice to you is, don't treat this as a concurrent variance. Treat it on its face what it is, is a zoning modification. But if you want to provide relief in this situation, do it with a well-stated motion that specifically on its face limits the presidential effect of the motion.
Okay. Before I open up this hearing for public comment, is there any questions of staff or Mr. Gerard before we go forward? Bill?
To Ms. Field, this drainage easement, we spoke briefly about it the last meeting. Is this surface drainage or is it piped drainage in that easement?
I believe it's just surface drainage. And so there, and we did have it reviewed by our site reviewer, and this was his recommendation that it be lifted up 12 inches and he was satisfied with that.
Can I?
Lance?
Along, hit same lines, Ms. Field. It is a public drainage easement as opposed to a private drainage easement?
It's on the subdivision plat.
Yeah. Yeah. It really doesn't stipulate, I mean, normally something like this, because it conveys water from other lots, in my experience, it would be a public drainage easement. And this would be what I would call an encroachment into an easement. So, but I was just wondering if, you know, it could be a private drainage easement, just like a private ingress egress, a perpetual ingress egress easement is for access on a driveway. But if it is a public drainage easement, then we have, Milton has rights to that easement. It may be something we want to address as part of the modifications.
Councilmember Luss, let me take a shot at that, and Carter, just to put you on notice, you may be called upon immediately to chime in. Different jurisdictions do it different ways. Some recorded drainage easements will provide on the plat that they inure to the benefit of the local government, and upon recordation of the plat, that's where they go, they vest in local government. I don't know that Milton necessarily does it exactly that way. It may be that this private drainage easement, although with admittedly public purpose, may inure to the benefit of the HOA, and that may be who has the rights to enforce an encroachment into their easement. And that may be an issue that the HOA has to address if they feel like it's an improper encroachment and it may not be a City of Milton issue. To the extent that it is a HOA-controlled easement, they may take exception to allowing this in there. But I think from the city's perspective, I think the issue was, what could the applicant do to mitigate the effect of this structure and the easement? And I think that's been resolved to the community development satisfaction.
I understand. Okay.
Correct.
Do you have other questions?
I have another question.
Go ahead, man.
There are a lot of, you know, like play area structures in the backs of a lot of the properties in that subdivision as well. This is strictly just for the shed alone, just nothing else. Is that what I'm?
Yes, that's right. It would be very, very limited relief.
Right.
Okay. I will open it up, and we'll hear from those speaking in support of this application.
We have one individual in support, Mr. Gerald Hudgens.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. We're back again. I'm Gerald Hudgens. My address is 12792 Donegal Lane. You've asked some very good questions. Let me go through that and address that. If we could stop just the timer for a minute, because I'm waiting for this PowerPoint. Here we go. From the south, talk a little slow. All right. What I have, and we'll go ahead and walk through it real quick for you. Do you have it on your screens where you can see the PowerPoint? Okay, very good. How did we get here? We got here because I have a lifelong hobby of gardening, enjoying gardening. My granddad spent a lot of time in the green house together and doing that sort of thing. So there was a magazine, this is on the front cover, got us very interested in trying to build something of extremely high quality, similar to this in the backyard. Single-family residents requested approval, as you say at the bottom, April 14, they received approval from the HOA. The HOA was aware of the entire plat, the easements and so on, the drainage easement. And to answer your question, yes, it is just a surface drainage. I have been taking pictures nonstop since about October, November, on each of these heavy rains. There is no sheeting or significant water rolling down through there. My opponents may try to lead you to believe that, but there are no significant water runoff issues down through there. We do have playground equipment and things like that in there. The shed would be, it's already eight inches off the ground, and so we only need four more inches to raise it. Opposition may say, well, it's on cinder blocks. Well, those will be removed, and like any shed that you see that are up on little tight blocks that would allow for free flow of water to go under the shed. So there'd be no impeding. As a matter of fact, it would impede less water on those blocks than some playground equipment, things that are, that are in people's yards. So that's not an issue there. Just in case there was any question about the approval, this is the HOA approval. You'll see our developer, Tom Sharp, approved it, as well as his management company. The approval was there. As you see, it says congratulations. We sent the official approval with the modification request you sent. The approval's dated April 14, which was quite some time ago before many of the current homeowners were in the subdivision. The personal research that led me to make this terrible error is I did not want to violate any covenants, anything of Milton, because I know the importance of doing that. So I researched it and found out that no permit was needed on anything 120 square feet or less. Also, of course, you see the guidance there about accessory structures. And I have been told, Robin has shown me the error of my ways, that I guess my interpretation of these standards is not correct, that that is how I got to where I am. I mean, I did not set out to say, I think I'll pull one over on Milton, let me see if I can't put it right back here in the drainage easement, and certainly none of that. Because as you can see, going back to April, I started the process off with our HOA showing them the plat and asking for that approval. Also, a lot of folks don't want to talk about it, but I also, while I was having another issue, permitting issue reviewed by Milton, as the permit guy that was out there on site, I said, you know, when I get finished with this pergola, I want to build the shed right back here. He didn't, I mean, he didn't say anything about, well, wait a minute, that's some type of, he didn't say a word about it. And my wife was there as well and said, you know, that should be no problem. He said, just, you know, be aware, you've got playground equipment and all this out here, and did, you know, remind me about the drainage easement issue back there. But he said, he wasn't going to make an issue out of any type of drainage, because I guess knowing there isn't a lot of drainage. Then minimum landscape strips and buffers, that was one other issue. This is from the screenshot that gave me the impression of the 10-foot issue. This is a screenshot, our aerial view, showing where the 50-foot buffer is. And you see, it's very close to my house, right at the deck line. So there's just really no additional space without pulling it closer to the road, which I think even more opposition would be there if it were pulled even closer to that 50-foot buffer. The idea was to set it near the rear of the lot. There is a little bit of a slope there, so it's kind of teeter-tottering on the easement there, 20-foot. You saw the screening issue. And I do have more, this is obviously what they look like in the future. And here again, you can see screening from, there are two sets of screenings. You've got to go through two layers of screening to see that. I'm going to speed up because I'm running out of time here. Talked about the standards, what it would look like. The idea is to have it look like my actual home, looking like the cedar shake shingles, the type of design and style, trying to resemble that. I did a CGI to try to give you a general idea. There it is, where we stopped construction of it. And for a moment, I'm going to stop so that any others can speak, and I would like to finish my presentation at that point. Okay? Thank you.
Our next speaker is David Marsden.
And just to clarify, this is an opposition?
Opposition.
Hello. I'm David Marsden. I'm at 12802 Donegal Lane. I'm Gerald's next-door neighbor. First question I had, do I repeat everything we said before, or is that all? Do you guys know what was said before? Do you guys know what was said before, or do I just say it again? I don't, I don't, I didn't, I don't know.
Two of us weren't.
Yeah, we've got two new council members, so you might want to repeat.
Okay, I mean, I'll review, I just, I just didn't know exactly how it worked, so. There's a few points of why we don't want it. I was in a one else showed up tonight, but number one, it goes against the original intent of the agreement with the neighbors. I spoke with Eric Seebush, who's the, was the former homeowner association in Andover North, and he was there when the whole neighborhood got put together, and they had certain things that they agreed upon. It was supposed to be an 80 or 90-foot setback, and obviously didn't have it with only 50 feet. It was supposed to have a horse fence, and there was supposed to be French reins put on, and it was supposed to be four-sided brick, all of our neighborhood. All of those agreements have been, all those agreements have gone away now. We don't have the fence, we don't have the drainage. So, he's very concerned that if we start, if we prove this, next thing you know, all the houses along their neighborhood are going to have a shed in their yard, which leads to say that the precedent it's set is just not, it's not a good precedence. Also, we're concerned with the maintenance after new owners would come in. Gerald's there now, I'm sure he's going to build a nice shed, he's going to take care of it, do what he's going to do, but the next person might come in there, and then it goes to pot, and you don't have anything, you have an ugly shed. And then, so we don't want that. Initially, when it first came out, there were about 15 homes in the neighborhood, obviously five of us came in opposition, that's a third of the neighborhood in opposition. We're growing fast, I think there's 10 or 12 more under construction, so I just don't want to set a precedence. There's obviously no hardship for this, Gerald just wants to do it for, for his hobby, which is fine, but we all have very large homes with more than adequate three-car garages and full basements, so to have the extra room is unnecessary. One more I learned last time, I feel like it's legislating for one particular lot, so it's like a spot zoning. No one else in the neighborhood's requested this, why does one person have to request it? And then, obviously the water runoff issue, he says there is none, I think there is one, I have it in my yard, the only way you're going to see it is if you come out and see it yourself. There's ripples, whenever we have a big storm, it ripples right where the drainage easement is. And I think that's about it. We're just opposed to it, and I just don't want to set that precedent. So, thank you for your time.
Okay.
That's all the comments, sir.
Okay. And we'll allow the balance of time to the applicant. Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. I wanted to point out that, David is correct, a representative from Andover came at the last meeting and pointed out that he, he was opposed to it. I, after the meeting, went through Andover, had never really been through there before, and found a number of sheds visible from the road. I did not even know this, but just two lots up from my house, there is a shed in Andover that is visible from Donegal Lane. So, you see the red arrow pointing directly to that shed, that shed is in Andover, and you can see it from Donegal Lane. There it is. This is a view, if you see the red arrow, that's pointing to the shed that's in Andover, and then way up the line, you see the shed that I had started to construct, the garden shed. So, my request is not some, you know, like, oh my gosh, this man's trying to build a shed. Andover has several sheds, as well as one backed right up to Vicry Crest property line. This is just a small sampling of sheds in Andover, small, as I say, small sampling. This is a home in Andover that actually has a barn visible from the street. This is an aerial view of my garden shed, only four Vicry Crest lots actually back up to Andover. Wanted to point that out, because at the last meeting, it was as if we were just going to have a whole line of sheds just built up and down the road, and there are only four remaining lots that would be of any issue. This is the view that I had of my backyard prior to deforestation of the, my neighbor's backyard, that's what it used to look like. So, if there's any water runoff, it's because all the trees have been removed. You see the deforestation, the arrow pointing to where all the trees have been removed, that, that just happened not too long ago. This is the view I have now of all the trees that were removed. I think Milton, you know, is, is pro tree, and I've tried to preserve the trees, that's why I have the limited space that I do have left to put my little shed tucked back there in the, in the area. By deforesting it, this is the view I now have of my neighbor's trash cans and truck and so on behind me. This is a view of another home directly behind Vicry Crest that we now have a lovely view of, which is like a, I don't know what that is, kind of like a sunroom or something back there. This is a home that's for sale, or actually it's sold in Providence Place, it actually sold, and the greenhouse was featured in the listing. So, you know, the issue of, I think the scare tactics of just, there are going to be sheds everywhere, there aren't many people I know that actually enjoy gardening and want to go this far to actually build a shed that, that would go to this great extreme. I promise you, I pledge tonight, I will do whatever it takes to make sure that I don't create a, a water problem, that if the homeowners are that concerned about it, I will make sure that, just as I did on this one, that the HOA continues to review these, these modifications as closely as they reviewed mine. They did not just do it lightly, they, they reviewed it very, very closely, just to make sure that it was going to be of the standards and so on. So, I, I just ask you for your, you know, your approval to enjoy the, the land that I have, the little bit of land that I have.
One minute remaining.
And, and to go forward from there. The other point I was trying to make here is that my shed is, is not, I would see as a detriment to anyone's view or anything like that, when there are a number of other obstacles and things, particularly at the shed that Andover already has right behind me. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, there's no more of the public time, and I'm going to close the public hearing. Open it up to questions from the council, either to the applicant or to staff. I have a question in hearing about the runoff problem, and I'll direct this toward staff right now, either Carter or Kathy. In, in looking at the drainage easement and the drainage and the shed, which I think I'm hearing that it's on concrete blocks, or it will be raised so that it won't impede water, you know, in your opinion, does this shed, this shed being there or not have any direct impact on the drainage problem, which it sounds like there is a drainage problem per se from, for the other neighbors, but is it, in your opinion, that this shed would be affecting that at all?
I, I think, all, all I want to really say is that we did have it reviewed by our, our engineers within the department, and this was their solution to alleviate that issue of, of the drainage, is, is to raise it up 12 inches, and, and which the applicant has agreed to match, but that was our solution.
And Carter, do you, are you in agreement with that, or?
Yeah, I didn't review this specifically, but in some discussions with Jimmy, that is the case.
Okay, thank you. We'll put it up to any other questions.
Lance? A few, simple ones. I guess the applicant, the, the shed is not on a permanent foundation then, it's not on slab, has a, I guess, a wood, a framed floor, and. That's fine.
I, a very good question. The, it is not on a slab, I forgot to point that out. In gardening, you want to, you want to runoff, you want to allow any water from the plants to be able to runoff down into the ground.
Right.
So, it would just have a pea gravel floor, the gravel, you know, would be there to also create a nice humidity, moisture in the, in the greenhouse. I did forget to mention, I handed you six additional letters of support, those are from the neighbors in Andover and Providence Oaks directly behind me. I'll be honest, they were very amused that I was coming, knocking on their door, asking for this approval. They were just amused that, that, you know, a simple garden shed would get to this point. But no, to answer your question, no floor.
So, further, the pea gravel floor, the pea gravel is going to be on the ground.
Directly on the ground, so it would just.
And so, you're actually going to have underneath your, the base of your framing wall, 12 inches, so there's going to be an opening?
Right, it'd be open, so things can just flow under.
All the way around, except where these blocks are going to be placed?
It would only be, because the shed's small, it's only like eight feet by, I think, 10 and a half.
A block at each corner?
At each corner, and then there would be, I guess, one right in the middle there for support.
Uh huh.
So, you're looking at, what, maybe a block every five feet?
So theoretically, any surface flow would flow.
Around.
Well, not exactly around, it could flow through the shed as well.
Through the gravel, or, there's also, I'd even thought of if it, if it would help with the, if this supposed drainage issue could build a berm to direct the flow in front or behind the shed even more, but there's a, I mean, seriously, we've had, as you know, it's been raining and raining and raining here for the last while, and every time I go out there to try to take a picture, it's like I'm taking a picture of nothing, because if I were to show that, you'd say, well, I'll see pine straw. You know, you're not, you're not seeing any kind of water and, and all that. One guy said, well, go take the picture in the dark, well, in the rain. I was like, I don't think that quite works.
Okay. Take this question in the spirit that it's asked. First, I'm a homeowner, I'm a do-it-yourselfer.
Right.
So, I've also had experiences with a lot of other homeowners where, you know, they, they get out and they build a fence, and it's, it's in a setback, and they're already building, and there's variance processes, and I've been through those before. And I do believe that a property owner should have reasonable use of their, their property. Since you can actually raise the shed, I guess you jack it up to do this?
I only need to go four inches to meet the 12 inches?
Yes, but you still have to raise it, so you'd have to jack it up.
Right.
To do it. The question is, would, how difficult would it be for you to slide at the seven or eight feet towards the street in order to get it out of that drainage easement? It would still be in the setback, it would still require a modification, because it is in the setback, and I believe 50-foot setback for a principal residence is reasonable, but for an ancillary structure, especially one that's only 80 square feet, is, that there should be some mechanism to allow homeowner, reasonable use of their property to do something like this, especially, obviously, the HOA does not prohibit freestanding sheds. I mean, I would think that would be an issue right now, if, if, were that the case.
Right.
But the fact that it is in a drainage easement, we're, we're talking about whether or not it's a public drainage easement or a private drainage easement, that, that would be my only, only question to you.
They, I lost my train, the, the first thing I forgot to mention is, you know, the issue of temporary structure, I don't want to lose sight that this is a temporary, in, in my view, is a temporary structure, and I would even ask if, if, for sometimes, you know, people bring in little small playhouses, that type of thing, would, would a playhouse sitting in that same location be of the same magnitude if you had a child's playhouse sitting there?
If it were in a drainage easement, again, most localities would consider within an easement such as that as an encroachment, and then you would have to have some sort of an agreement as far as that encroachment were concerned, the fact that if there was something that needed to be done within that easement, you'd be responsible removing the encroachment, that type of thing. So, and just like you said, you know, I've seen structures this size and larger, matter of fact, right along Highway 9, they build little playhouses that they pick up and haul in and set it down.
Right.
I realize you've got it sitting there, but the fact it isn't on a slab.
No, it's not on a slab.
Is not anchored, really, that if you got it out of the drainage easement, then you could actually put it down the ground, you wouldn't have the, the problem of the water, if there is water flowing along, and, you know, we had our biblical event, what I call biblical event, several years ago, that, you know, we had the bad floods, then you wouldn't have that issue of, you know, possible surface flow going through your nice garden, nice garden shed. And so, that, you know, that's the only point I want to bring up, is, is that, that possibility.
With all due respect, I, I don't mind the water flowing under or, or through it, and I think that piers, even if they were round piers, would allow for easy movement of water, you know, 12 inches would be quite a bit of water, I mean, that'd be a significant rainfall, would allow for the easy flow. The other thing is, I, I think bringing it forward will just raise additional issues where folks will say, well, now he's bringing it even closer to the road, you know? Well, gosh, you know, and now he's bringing it, so we, you know, it's even closer, so I just, I would hesitate, I mean, it's possible theoretically, but ideally, if I could leave it and prop it up on the, the piers, or allow for free movement of water under it, that would be preferred, of course. Yeah. I understand. Oh, and I also wanted to address this issue of, yes, yes, we have basements, but I swear, I can't get plants to grow in basements in the dark. I, I, you know, I've tried, that's why I thought I'd go to a garden shed where there's daylight, actually, and I've tried the fluorescent lights and so on, but haven't had any real luck with that. Okay?
Finally, to the neighbor, I'm asking you. Do you live to the right, to the left, behind, where do you live?
I live to the right.
You live to the right of the property?
Correct.
On the opposite side of where the shed's going to be?
Correct.
Okay. That's it, Joe.
Okay. Thank you, Lance. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
I did want to ask the staff one thing, because they didn't have the comment, but I just want to confirm. You said that you really felt like, based on the 50-foot setback, there wasn't another place that it could adequately be put without having to, to get either a variance or zoning modification or something, is that correct?
That is correct.
So that he really does have a hardship based on his lot that would not allow him a, a place to put the structure?
Yes.
Anybody else?
The only other point I wanted to make is that you do, well, consider this like a temporary structure, since it's not on a foundation, it does give you some flexibility, as even if it is placed where, where he wants, where he has it right now, it is a temporary structure, really no different than if it were a playhouse that you brought in for your kids to play in, or a piece, a big piece of play equipment. I mean, he had, I guess you have a, a trampoline in the back of the house, and.
I do not. I just kind of get.
Well, I saw these play equipment.
That's my membership.
Yeah, I just saw here, on your, on your site plan, it says play equipment.
You just have, well, yes, I believe.
Right, is that, okay.
Just a second.
Okay.
Okay. I don't have any. Bill, you working on a question?
I am. Further to Lance's last question about the playground that we see in this one photo, I see a slide in what appears to be a swing, then there's additional playground equipment. Are you saying that additional equipment is in your neighbor's yard?
Let me interrupt just real quick, councilmember, since this is a zoning matter, I'd really like to have this recorded, I'd just ask that the applicant come back to the mic, we're going to have a back and forth exchange.
There a statement you need me to restate? Anything?
Yeah.
Okay.
You have.
Okay, yeah, the, I do not have a trampoline, I don't plan to ever buy one, I've heard one kid with a broken arm, so I'm fine there. Then, to answer your question, we frankly are just, we're not happy ourselves, looking at that play equipment that we have, and we are discussing selling both of those items. We don't, we personally, I mean, we've got a large investment in our home, I mean, a very, very large investment, so we don't want to do anything that would significantly detract from value of our own home, our own real estate investment. Also mentioned, this shed is not an investment by any means, it's a hobby, but yes, there are two playsets, but we were, yes.
Restate my question, please, then. You have one photo here, it's view looking north along the rear property line from behind the shed, and I see a, a lot of play equipment there. Is all of that your equipment?
No, 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 yours, if you see a, I don't know if it's in color, there is another trampoline in.
No, there's a, it's a green slide and a little green roof on top of it.
Yes, yes, the, the green slide, the yellow slide, that is ours.
And there's additional equipment further to the north of that?
Not unless it's the neighbor's.
And the neighbor's yard?
Right. Which they have another playset.
Right.
And they have a trampoline.
I think that's the point the councilman lost is trying to, to get to, is that there is this type of equipment in the neighbor, I guess it's in the neighbor that has.
Right.
Spoken here.
That's right.
And would you say all of that is in the drainage easement?
Yes, unfortunately, we all have that 50-foot setback, and there's really no way for us to. And there's really no way for us to have playground equipment unless we all are violating the 50-foot setback. And I did, when I first talked to Robyn, that was one of my huge concerns, is I said, well then, when Robyn pointed that out, I said, "So are we all in violation of a 50-foot setback because we have to have somewhere to put play equipment?" And my understanding was, well, play equipment, we're not going to make a big deal out of that.
Thank you, that's my question.
Okay. Have any more questions or comments from council?
I got one question, Mr. Mayor. With the purchase, with this structure, I assume this would have, if you built it well, some kind of positive effect on its property value? Or are we determining yes or no on that? Now we've got to affect taxes.
I don't know, at less than 100 square feet, if it would be something that would be assessed or not. That's not something that we would look at.
Sure.
Okay. I'll open this up for a motion in a second. Any more comments or questions?
Well, in order to proceed with the debate, I would move that we approve ZM 11-03 as stipulated in the agenda.
Okay, so, good question, Karen.
What was her question?
The expert, hold on, I'm going to amend my motion, or I'm going to change my motion. I don't have to amend it.
Well, you don't have a second. You don't have a second.
That's right. Ken, in your detailed email that you sent to us earlier-
Yes.
-you had some language in there that you wanted to see used as the motion itself.
Yes.
Is that only if we were going to go for a different type of variance?
No.
Or is this the language you want to see right now?
The motion that you're attempting to make, I would recommend that you make it using that language.
Okay, well, since you've been kind enough to provide it, I'll just read it. "I move to grant a change of zoning conditions such as will reduce the minimum rear yard setback from 50 to 10 feet on 12-792 Donegal Lane, ZM 11-03 for the following reasons. One, this change of condition will authorize a use that's suitable in view of the use and development of adjacent and nearby property. Two, this change of conditions will not adversely affect the existing area or the existing use of adjacent property. Three, this change of conditions is not materially inconsistent with the policies and intent of the land use plan. Five, the anticipated use of this gardening structure, along with its relatively small footprint and accompanying vegetative screening, provides supporting grounds to approve this change of condition. As a further part of this motion, I wish to specifically set forth in the record that this change of zoning condition is based entirely on the particular facts in the record and will have no presidential value with respect to any other future request for change to zoning conditions by any applicant."
I'll second the motion.
Okay.
This is the part of the motion.
I was inspired.
This is, all right, we got a motion by councilmember Longoria. We have a second, but councilmember Lust has confirmed and read into the record for approval for application ZM 11-03 with the stipulations that were read into the record. Now I'll open it up for discussion.
For clarification-
Councilmember Thurman.
I noticed we go reasons one, two, three, and five.
Councilmember Thurman, I'm from Tennessee. And we do our best with fours, but sometimes we forget.
Okay. And that's not a problem if we have no four.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah. In the motion that was so arrogantly presented by councilmember Longoria, it does say the change, the setback particular to this lot, from 50 to 10 feet. Should we add that the setback change is specifically for just this structure? Because, believe me, I mean, the way the motion's being done is like the entire setback on this particular lot would be changed and possibly could allow someone to come in and, or even the applicant.
That's a great question. And the reason is by specifically referencing to this EM number-
Right.
-it captures specifically what that is for.
Okay, good. Good.
Okay. Have any comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to make comments that one of the reasons that I thought we should approve this particular request is that I agree with the applicant that the structure itself is not necessarily a detriment. I certainly understand the conditions that he's experiencing in terms of the way his yard is positioned and the limited amount of space that he has for something like this. Also thought very hard about the comments from the people that are in opposition. And so, the idea that this structure be in keeping with the look of the home, in terms of the shingled outside and the, you know, matching with the outside of the existing structure, I think is very, very important. So we need to make sure that we keep that up. In terms of raising the structure itself to provide relief in terms of the drainage, I think that that should address the drainage issue that was also a concern by the people that spoke about this. But, and the bottom line is, I think that, you know, we all need to have some flexibility when it comes to using our property. So I think that this is something that we should support.
Okay. Karen?
I just want to verify with the city attorney. I know in the last meeting, we had a lot of discussion concerning precedent and the fear that, you know, this would set a huge precedence for removing the setback requirements. And you're comfortable with the motion that was presented, that it does not set a precedence for other barns and other things to be built in the setbacks throughout Milton?
Councilmember Thurman, I absolutely am. I mean, not only is that clear from the records you all created by your discussion, but it is set forth specifically in the motion. So there will be no precedent set for this, and to the extent it was ever raised as precedent, your community development office would be very comfortable coming to you and saying it cannot be used that way.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, and I don't know that you may be ready to vote or may not be, but councilmember Longoria and to the individual that seconded it, would you be agreeable to putting in something I omitted, and that is, the motion would include proposed staff conditions?
Yes, and having just attended the Rules of Order training class at the mayor's day event this past weekend.
You did just state another motion.
Yes.
Well, we could do it if you want to do it with a lot of procedural complexity.
You know what, since four of us attended the class, let's do it the right way. Let's do it this way. Mr. Longoria, would you like to offer us a motion?
That would be a motion, well, actually, that would, it has been seconded, hasn't it?
It's been seconded, so you have to actually-
Actually make a motion to amend it.
And it has to be somebody other than the first person that did it.
Actually, I can make a motion to withdraw my motion. And then we can just move a different-
And then we get a second, or we can vote on this motion.
Ken, don't get upset with us. We're coming back training from class.
That's why you-
I would like to make a motion that we add an additional condition, that the recommended staff conditions must be adhered to along with the regular motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
I have a second.
I have a second. I have a motion by councilmember Thurman, a second by councilmember Hewitt. If we vote on this motion, will that-
That will add the amendment.
That will add the amendment to the original.
You need to vote one more time on the amended motion. Yes, sir.
All right. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Now the motion's amended, and you need to make one final, take one final vote.
On?
The motion as amended. Right.
Okay. Well, I'm not sure I-
Is there any additional discussion? Yeah, that's, that's the way, if we're going to do this, following that-
All right, is there any discussion? Does he need to make another motion?
No.
Okay. All in, all right, no discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
So the first vote was just on whether or not that additional condition could be added. And then once that condition was on set pass, then we were voting on the entire motion.
That's correct.
Okay. And now we can go back to, under our reports and presentations, we held off on one to Milton Cuisine. And tonight, we want to recognize Milton's Cuisine and Cocktails, which is a popular crabapple eatery, being recognized by the website opentable.com as being one of the top 100 restaurants in the United States, serving American-style food. It's a big honor for any restaurant and will surely bring travelers looking for tasty treats into Milton. So I'd like to turn this over to councilmember Thurman, who is the author of this proclamation to Milton's Cuisine.
Okay, great. Proclamation, recognizing Milton's Cuisine and Cocktails being named a top 100 American cuisine restaurant. Whereas, the city of Milton seeks to promote its many unique local businesses and the tremendous services they provide. And whereas, Milton's Cuisine and Cocktails, located in historic downtown Crabapple, exemplifies the area's charm, class, and taste, offering new southern fine dining to residents, neighbors, and travelers. And whereas, Milton's Cuisine and Cocktails was recently named one of the top 100 American cuisine restaurants in the country by opentable.com. And whereas, the prestigious website also commended the eatery for having the best ambiance of any restaurant in North Fulton, due to the buildings in which it sits, a 150-year-old farmhouse and a cottage from the 1930s. And whereas, this designation will bring fine diners from across the United States to Milton to try executive chef Boyd Rose's famous cuisine, thereby creating a national name recognition and panache for the city of Milton. Now, therefore, we, the mayor and city council of the city of Milton, Georgia, hereby recognize Milton's Cuisine and Cocktails being named a top 100 American cuisine restaurant, given under my hand and seal of the city of Milton, Georgia on this 23rd day of January 2012. And all I know is we better start making our reservations if it's going to be bringing all these people from all over the United States in. So, look, if you're going to come down, let's get some pictures.
Chef Boyd, you want to?
Yeah. Here, you got him. There you go. I think it's one of them, yeah, we got him. Yeah. And you want to introduce everybody for us?
This is my associate, Mary Dollar. One of my partners, the guy I can do anything without, Mike Everton. Heather Tettman, who has been a large part of our success this last year, this area called Little Dollar.
What's important?
We have a few extras, so she can have one too.
Good.
Now we get, now we get the cap.
Yeah, and I take three, only have three. Two, three. One, two, three. One, two, and three.
Thank you. Thank y'all. Glad to have you. Yeah, love it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. First of all, the first and second in the area that they can have two, they'll accept them.
We've got an executive session.
That's a great place.
Yeah, it is. Thank you.
Just want to say, we're proud to be able to present you with that proclamation. And I think it's one unanimous thing from the council, that I think everybody here supports Milton's. What a great place. Thank you, guys. All right, we'll go back to see where we are. If the city clerk would please call the next zoning agenda item.
Next item is RZ 1119 VC 1105, 15260 Hopewell Road, applicant Reunion Park. Request to rezon from AG1 Agricultural to C1 Community Business and AG1 Agricultural for an existing 1,180 square foot building for general retail uses and an existing 1,835 square foot single-family residence to remain with the following four-part concurrent variance. One, to reduce the 50-foot undisturbed buffer and 10-foot improvement setback to a 10-foot landscape strip along the south zoning line of parcel one, intersecting with Hopewell Road and running north 68 degrees, 21 minutes, 12 seconds west, a distance of 89.69 feet, section 6411413A. Second, to reduce the 50-foot buffer and 10-foot improvement setback to a minimum 40-foot buffer along the south zoning line of parcel one, parallel to Thompson Road, running from the corner of an existing driveway north 80 degrees, 44 minutes, 27 seconds west, 190.43 feet to the westerly 10-foot improvement setback line, section 6411413A. Third, to delete the 50-foot buffer and 10-foot improvement setback along the southwest zoning line of parcel one, running from Hopewell Road north 68 degrees, 10 minutes, 12 seconds west, 89.69 feet, and north 21 degrees, 34 minutes, 48 seconds west, 35.46 feet to the northerly line of an existing driveway for parcel two, section 6411413A. And fourth, to reduce the 25-foot setback for parking adjacent to residentially-used property to 10 feet along the south zoning line, section 64-1433F1. This is agenda item number 12011. First presentation at the January 9, 2012 Regular Council Meeting. Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, this is to notify you that staff did receive a request from the applicant of this petition for withdrawal without prejudice. Staff does concur with this request. Deborah Anthony, the attorney for the applicant, is here tonight to present personally to you this request for withdrawal.
Deborah Anthony, my business address is 5780 Windward Parkway Suite 300, Alpharetta, Georgia 3005. And we have decided to regroup, see if we can find a way to make this building remain. And one of the things that we have, has been recommended to us by not only some of the people in opposition, but also staff, is that we look at the historic district ordinance. And so, our intent is to wait for that to be finalized and then see how that might fit in, again, to try to be able to save this building. So for those reasons, we do respectfully request that we permit be permitted to withdraw under section 64-2061 of the Milton Code of Ordinances.
Thank you. Okay, since we do have a public hearing, we need to, like to allow anybody that came here to speak tonight. Do we have any more? Do we have any public comment in support of this application?
We have no more in support. We do have two individuals in opposition.
Okay, I'll move to listen to those comments.
Our first comment in opposition is Jason Anastasia.
My name's Jason Anastasia. I live at 15285 Bell Park Road, Milton, Georgia. And now that she's withdrawn, my comments are pretty limited. So I guess I reserve until they come back with another application.
Thank you.
And our next comment comes from Joan Borzalary.
Joan Borzalary, 540 Kings County Court, Milton, Georgia. Please deny the C1 zoning change for this property for the following reasons, and I'll just-
the people in opposition, but also staff, is that we look at the historic district ordinance, and so we, our intent is to wait for that to be finalized and then see how that might fit in, again, to try to be able to save this building. So, for those reasons, we do respectfully request that we permit be permitted to withdraw under section 64-2061 of the Milton Code of Ordinances.
Thank you. Okay, since we do have a public hearing, we need to, like to allow anybody that came here to speak tonight, do we have any more, do we have any public comment in support of this application?
We have no more in support. We do have two individuals in opposition.
Okay, I'll move to listen to those comments.
Our first comment in opposition is Jason Anastasia.
My name's Jason Anastasia. I live at 15285 Bell Park Road, Milton, Georgia, and now that she's withdrawn, my comments are pretty limited. So I guess I reserve until they come back with another application.
Thank you.
And our next comment comes from Joan Borzolieri.
Joan Borzolieri, 540 Kings County Court, Milton, Georgia. Please deny the C1 zoning change for this property for the following reasons, and I'll just go ahead and tick off my bullet points, which I'm sure you've all heard before. This constitutes spot zoning as it introduces commercial retail into an area currently zoned AG1. Staff has recommended this zoning change be denied citing the fact that, among other things, the lot does not meet the entry-exit access criteria for a business establishment in Milton. The planning commission voted to deny this rezoning request last month. This request is contrary to the comprehensive plan that restricts commercial retail establishments in Milton's interior except for those allowed under the AG1 zoning category. It is precedent-setting, a nearby property owner, excuse me, told me last month that if C1 is granted in this instance, she would immediately ask for the C1 zoning for her 10 acres since commercial property so close by would diminish her residential property values. This particular corner is extremely dangerous. I live 4/10 of a mile from the property and go through the intersection three or four times a day. Hopewell Road in this half-mile stretch has a curve, a grade, and Thompson Road is offset, so there are effectively two intersections to navigate. This has been the site of multiple accidents over the past few years. Please deny the C1 zoning for this property. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, is that all our public comment?
Yes, sir.
And I'll go ahead and close this public hearing. We, we've heard from the applicant that they would like to withdraw this application. We've got, our choices are, we can accept withdrawal, we can have a motion to accept the withdrawal, we can have a motion to discuss and approve this application, or we can have a motion and discussion to deny this application. So, I'll leave it up right now for, is there any council, any comments or questions, and if not, we'll open it up for a motion. Okay, hearing none, do I have any motions?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to accept the request for withdrawal without prejudice of the above, of agenda item number 12010. It's the approval of an adoption. I'm on the wrong one. It's actually RZ 11-19, VC 1105, 15260 Hopewell Road, Reunion Park, and request to rezon from AG1 Agricultural to C1 Community Business and AG1 Agricultural for an existing 1,180 square foot building for general retail uses and an existing 1,835 square foot single-family residence to remain with the following four-part concurrent variances as they are listed in tonight's agenda. In this application for rezoning concurrent variances complies with section 64-261 of the Milton Code of Ordinances.
I'll second it.
I've got a motion by Councilmember Law, a second by Councilmember Thurman to allow this zoning case, RZ 11-19, VC 11-05, for, to be removed or to be, what's the word? Withdrawn without prejudice. Any council discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, well, the city clerk, please sound the next zoning item.
The next item is RZ 1117, to amend Article 16 of the zoning ordinance, chapter 64 of the City Code signs. Agenda item number 12012, first presentation at January 9th, 2012 regular council meeting. Ms. Kathy Field.
Mayor, council, I'm going to handle this one tonight. This one's similar to the last one. We published it for January in hopes that we would get to a spot that we could actually debate this one tonight. It hung up in our legal office a little bit longer than, which is not necessarily a bad thing, I don't want to look as though Ken stalled this thing. It's just needed a little bit more review there than we had originally thought. I would ask, you know, obviously we have a public hearing tonight, so you need to hear comments as this one as well. I would ask that we defer this one back to first presentation. I think that there's going to be enough materially different changes in the final document that I would like it to start the process again. You would see this deferred then to February 6th for first presentation, the 13th for our work session, and then it'd come before you in the zoning agenda on February 20th.
Okay.
Twenty-second.
Okay, is there a?
Twenty-second, sorry. Six, thirteen, twenty-second.
Okay, let me open it up to a public comment.
We have one public comment in support, that would be Ms. Robin Coletti.
Hi, my name's Robin Coletti. I'm with Dogwash Cafe. My address is 12635 Crab Apple Road, Milton, 30004. I'm here tonight to, one, with the, sorry, I'm a little nervous, with the, with the new sign revisions that have been made, we are very much in support of those revisions, and I'm here mainly just to thank everybody for listening, to listening to us, listening to the business owners, wanting to work with us, Mr. Lockhart for, the first time we came in, listening, guiding us where we needed to go to fight our cause, Ms. Fields for having a wonderful committee that did listen to us, that worked with us, made the changes that would work for us in the Crab Apple Overlay District, and, you know, you know, and also thank your crew, and I especially want to thank Robin for basically keeping me abreast of changes, you know, me bothering or answering my questions, and this and that. So, anyway, I know it's been delayed, and I don't think any major modifications are being made, but we're asking, and we're asking and encouraging the city council and Mr. Mayor to please approve it when it is proposed. And all I can say is we're thrilled to death, you know, thank you very, very much. So, that's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Coletti, I mean, Coletti.
Coletti.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Did I get it right?
I can add some level of comfort there, that what you'll see is more form over function, if that makes any sense, so we're cleaning it up from a legal perspective, but there, she is correct, there's not, not many subs, not many, if any, substantive changes versus what published.
Okay. Any more?
That's all, sir.
All right, thank you very much for your, your public comments, and I know you live quite a ways away, so we appreciate you driving over here. All right, the city clerk will please call the next item.
The motion.
Do I have a motion to defer?
Mayor, I'll put forth a motion for RZ 11-17 to amend Article 16 of the zoning ordinance, chapter 64 of City Code signs, to defer it back to first presentation on February 6th.
I'll second.
Okay. I have a motion by Councilmember Thurman for deferral and seconded by Councilmember Law. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Now we'll move on to unfinished business. The city clerk, please sound the item.
Approval of the adoption of an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Milton, Georgia, to amend chapter two, administration, Article six, financial management program of the city of Milton Code of Ordinances to include Division 13 fund balance policy. This is agenda item number 12010. First presentation was heard at the January 9th, 2012 regular council meeting. Ms. Stacy Inglis.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. What you have before you is a fund balance policy, and this is something that we need to adopt to adhere to the Government Accounting Standards Board Statement Number 54. They have issued this statement to clarify some of the misunderstanding that people have had, or different organizations have had, when reporting fund balance, and so they've come out with some new standards on how to report fund balance, so you're going to see a little bit of a difference in what we've done previously. I will point out to you, what you, was, what was in the packet is a little bit different, one minor little change, the very last sentence in the policy. The original stated that we would look at this policy annually and make any recommendation to changes, and as a suggestion of the attorney, we were going to change that to when the need arises, the finance department will, shall make any necessary recommendation to the city council for changes to this policy. That's simply, just to kind of, it's, it could be even fewer than, more frequent than annually, or less frequent than annually, but we will look at all of our policies as a typical standard annually. I will also point out to you, this is something new, we added to this fund balance policy as a suggestion from our auditors about surplus fund balance, if you see the, second to the last paragraph, it states that anything in our fund balance over 21% of our, of our subsequent year's operating budget will be considered surplus, and we can use it for one-time expenditures. We currently don't have anything that states what surplus is in our fund balance, and so this is kind of clarifying that. We put 21% because 16% is what we have to have in our fund balance to cover any shortfalls or anything like that, and this is just 5% over that. So, it's your discretion as to what you want to put as surplus fund balance, but we just suggested 21%.
The question that, that allows us to spend it, the surplus, on one time.
One-time capital improvement expenditures.
But it doesn't necessarily mean we have to.
Right.
To clarify that. Okay, any questions for Ms. Inglis? Any financial minds?
I don't know that we have a whole other choice.
I'd like to state that while he was learning procedures, I was in a finance course, and we covered a lot of this, and I think it's, I like the fact of classifying of fund balances as to what's, you know, basically can or is restricted, committed funds and that, and I think it makes it much clearer to us as the council and to our constituents as to what the fund balance actually is and what it can be used for. So, I think this is a good adoption.
Exactly, thank you. And it's actually, is more consistent across organizations as well, so you'll see a little more consistency whenever you're looking in comparing our budget or our comprehensive annual financial report to other organizations.
Okay, I have a motion or a second?
I'll make a motion to approve agenda item 12-010.
Second.
Okay, got a motion by Councilmember Hewitt, a second by Councilmember Longoria, for approval of item RZ 11-17, or, I'm sorry, 12, agenda item number 12-010. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Moving on to new business.
Thank you.
City clerk, please sound the item.
Approval of a resolution for the city of Milton to partner with Fulton County Department of Registration and Elections to participate in the voter education and outreach program, VEOP, to educate, register, and increase voter participation. This is agenda item number 12027.
Okay, last, I believe it was Wednesday, we had several members from our staff and a couple volunteers partake, including Chris Maser, in voter registration training, and I got to spend a couple hours there, but they spent several hours and learned a lot, I think. But anyways, what the biggest thing was, we learned, and the biggest point is there are so many people, such a small percentage of eligible voters that are not registered. And then when you look at the percentage of people that are registered but then come out and vote, it's just a small percentage of our population, so we really, and seen a big drive to really change that. So, by approving this resolution, we're just becoming a part of the partnership to improve the voter registration in our, not only in our community, but all those around us, so if there's any questions, I'll be glad to ask.
I just had one question. I noticed it said that there are 2,500 inactive registered voters in Milton, and I know from past history, when I've worked on annexations, a lot of those probably don't even live in Milton anymore. Is there a way now to remove people who are no longer residents from the voter registration?
Did they address that, Chris?
That wasn't addressed, that number was made up of people that no longer lived here, and quite honestly, people that were dead.
Right.
Is what make up that number. So, I'm not sure if the, we can check with J.B. Reed to?
Because I know the way it currently works in Fulton County, unless it's been seven years of non-voting, then you're still left on it unless you've changed to another location within Fulton County, so it'd be nice to find that out.
I'll check to get the answer to that. The push of this was to, and probably the thing to highlight is that anybody at any point can now come to Milton City Hall and register to vote, which is not something we offered prior to, to the training the other, the other day, so that's a good thing, and hopefully we'll get those people out to register.
Okay. Well?
Maybe briefly, if you could explain what the elections board is going to do to be proactive to register more of these voters.
Do you want to do it?
No, go ahead.
There's several different, it's almost like the hub with the spokes approach, you know, there's this whole initiative right in the middle, and there's multiple different things that they're trying to do to get people registered to vote, from community events to having, you know, people staged at different places, to having, you know, all the cities are together now that any city hall is an active voter registration place. They've given everybody who took the training kind of a target of getting 10 people who aren't registered to vote to vote, so I guess there's even an individual goal as to how you try to get people registered. You know, one of these days here, in the next week or so, I'm going to ask everybody that I come in contact with if they're registered to vote, so be prepared, because I'm going to give my 10 real quick.
You guys better be able to say yes.
And we've, we've had a web presence, obviously the mayors have come together to support the initiative. Hopefully we can get our HOAs involved and just generate some, some energy and some spark behind, if you're not registered to vote, becoming registered to vote and actually participating in the elections that are occurring this year.
Just a quick point, I think one of the objections I've heard from some people about registering is the fact that they then get their name on the list for jury duty. Was that discussed in?
You know, and they, and they brought the point that you're just as likely getting your driver's license to getting brought up for jury duty, so, I guess, but you brought up a good point, it needs to be, that needs to be, even need to be educated on that.
Yeah, I mean, that was one of those things where you're more, more likely than not to, you know, to have your driver's license call you to jury duty than being registered to vote, but, you know, at the end of the day, that's a civic duty too.
Sure.
So, you know, anyway.
Yeah, I agree. All right. Do I have a motion or a second?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to approve agenda item number 12027, approval of a resolution for the city of Milton to partner with Fulton County Department of Registration and Elections to participate in the voter education and outreach program to educate, register, and increase voter participation.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Law, a second from Councilmember Thurman for agenda item number 12-027. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, at this point, do I have a motion that?
Mayor, prior to doing a motion for that, I noticed that Ms. Barbara Duffy had come to the audience, so do you think we could do that proclamation?
You know what? We sure can. I look forward to doing that. Good time, okay. Stephanie, I'm going to read this proclamation first, and then I'm going to ask you to come up, and we'll present it to you. Whereas, eight concerned citizens from our community gathered on July 29th, 1982, and formed a nonprofit charitable organization known as North Fulton Community Charities. And whereas, North Fulton Community Charity's mission is to build self-sufficiency and prevent homelessness and hunger by providing emergency assistance and family enrichment programs for the financially challenged families residing in our community. And whereas, North Fulton Community Charities provided emergency aid to more than 5,000 families this past year. And whereas, North Fulton Community Charities distributes more than nine tons of food each week to combat hunger. And whereas, North Fulton Community Charities provides enrichment programs designed to enable self-sufficiency. Classes are taught in money management, job seeking, GED preparation, English as a second language, and other life skills as needed. And whereas, North Fulton Community Charities positively impacts the lives of underprivileged children by donating school supplies, warm coats, warm coats and clothing, Easter baskets, children by donating school supplies, warm coats and clothing, Easter baskets and toys. And whereas, North Fulton Community Charities conducts an annual holiday, holiday providing food baskets for needy families. And whereas, North Fulton Community Charities has constituted a coalition of compassion in the community made up of 80 faith-based partners, 141 civic partners, 101 area schools, 418 corporate partners, as well as hundreds of individuals and families. And whereas, North Fulton Community Charities logged more than 125,000 volunteer hours, wow, and employs 500 volunteers each week. That's amazing. And whereas, North Fulton Community Charities is conducting its annual fund and awareness raising campaign, Have a Heart for North Fulton Community Charities, during the month of February. Now, therefore, we, the mayor and the city council, the city of Milton, Georgia hereby proclaim the month of February 2012 as Have a Heart for North Fulton Community Charities Month, and call upon the citizens of Milton to join in the celebration by making a contribution in support of the great work that North Fulton Community Charities is doing to enhance the quality of life in our city. This is given under my hand and seal of the city of Milton, Georgia on the 23rd day of January 2012. At this point, I'd like to ask Ms. Barbara Duffy to step forward and also I'd like to ask the council to join me in giving this proclamation. Give them this proclamation.
Chris, did you get the...
I grabbed it.
Can I say one thing? And I'm not sure anyone knows that North Fulton Charities did get a CBDC grant for Fulton County to assist residents of Alpharetta. Very pleased with that's going to happen this year. That's new for us, and so I'm very pleased. We do thank Alpharetta for all that you do, and we promise...
That's okay.
CBDC is for Milton, and I do really appreciate it.
Well, we appreciate all you did, so.
Absolutely.
All right. Short reports tonight, Chris? Is that what I heard?
Very, very short, but I didn't have to...
Well, we need to...
Do you have an executive session?
We have an executive session. By order of the agenda, or amended agenda, I have a motion that we move into executive session.
Could I give one, just a couple of quick updates?
Sure.
Just a couple of quick...
Sure, just to shut up.
Just while I have you all here, I want to let you know that I will be out of the office the remainder of the week. I've got a meeting early morning, tomorrow morning, at the county building at 8:00. Then I've got an 11:00 flight out towards Phoenix, where I'll be attending a class...
Tors?
Tors, Phoenix?
Just go in that direction. I'm going to parachute out so I can see the Grand Canyon somewhere over there.
Okay.
Yeah. So, and I'll be back late Friday, be back in the office on Monday. I ask from time to time for the council to come meet with me on either a one or two council member basis. I need that to occur either next week at some point or the week after that. I don't want it to go out much past the week of the 6th, but there's just enough things moving that I want to have the opportunity to engage each person, either individually or a couple. I don't really want to go more than a couple at a time. But if you wouldn't mind, look at your calendar tonight, try to pick out a day, and before you forget about it, in the next three or four days, shoot me a couple of dates and I'll get a calendar. But an hour, give or take. But there's several things I just want to update everybody on. So that's what I have.
Okay. All right. We'll, a motion on our, in addition to our agenda, we, do I have a motion to move into executive session to discuss litigation? So moved.
Second.
I have a motion to second to move into executive session to discuss litigation. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.